Today is June 12, 2024. This special meeting of Georgetown County Council is being called to order. Please note that this meeting is being live streamed. We do have a quorum present. And we'll ask Consulate Carolina to give us the indication and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day as we go about the business of Georgetown County, but most important, for the people of Georgetown County. Guide and direct us in your name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Consulate Carolina. And thank you to all of you for being here at this special meeting of Georgetown County Council. We're going down to the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Is move by Consulate Carolina is their second.
Second.
Second, the Consulate Elliott, any opposed? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose, motion carries. We'll move down to the consent agenda. And by approval of the agenda, we have agreed to the matters that are set forth on our consent agenda, which is procurement number 24-0460 asphalt removal surfaces. Again, by approving the agenda, we have approved that item on the consent agenda. We'll move down to our first reading of ordinances. First, we have ordinance, which will be read into the record only. Ordinance number 24-33, an ordinance to impose, subject to referendum approval and pursuant to the Capitol Project Sales Tax Act, a 1% sales and use tax, the tax within Georgetown County, South Carolina, for not more than eight years, to order a countywide referendum on the question of imposing the tax and prescribe the contents of the valid question to specify the purposes for which the proceeds from the tax are to be used, the maximum time for imposition of the tax, and to provide for other matters relating thereto. And we have ordinance number 24-34, an ordinance to levy and impose a 1% local option sales and use tax within Georgetown County, South Carolina pursuant to Section 4-10, Dash 10, a Secretary of the South Carolina Court of Law, 1976, as amended, to define the specific purpose of the tax to impose conditions and restrictions upon the use of the proceeds of the tax to provide for a countywide referendum for the imposition of the tax, to provide for the conduct of such referendum, to provide for the administration of the tax and other matters relating thereto. And again, that's our first reading of those particular ordinances, and it's being read into the record only. We'll move down to our reports to council. We first have the presentation regarding our land use element, comprehensive plan. Ms. Richardson.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, and thank you all for coming out on a Wednesday. I'm pleased to say that we are now in the final stages of our update to the land use settlement of the comprehensive plan. We have been discussing and planning this process for quite some time and have been actively engaged with our consultants since late summer of last year. The draft that you have in front of you, that you've all been presented with, is about the sixth revision of the document since we started working. The consultant has made changes based on comments from staff, from the Planning Commission, from the community. And we believe each change has been an improvement and led us to a better document. We've been working hard to address community concerns and to develop a document that supports the protection of established communities in our area as well as our natural resources, while still providing opportunities for growth and for economic development. And you'll see both of those things reflected in the vision that we'll go over in just a few minutes. This plan is different from our current land use element. There are some changes that you'll see, and that does take some getting used to. It's a little bit different vernacular, different place types. But we think that this mode and this plan will give us better opportunities for flexibility to deal with our very diverse county and the challenges that we currently face. You're gonna hear a lot in the next little bit about affordable housing, about increased environmental protections, and some recommendations for amending our zoning ordinance to implement the plan. As you know, this is the most important part. You've heard me say many times, this plan is a guide. But the real change comes with the implementation of the regulatory documents, like the zoning map and the zoning ordinance. I think the last time that you heard from the Boudreaux Group was back in November. We had a joint council and planning commission meeting. A lot has happened in the terms of this document and this plan and the map since then. So we wanted to catch you up on what's taken place since then as well as give you all the opportunity to ask questions and make comments on the drafts that are before you. And at this time, I will introduce quickly our consultant. This is Mr. Ryan Bland with the Boudreaux Group. And I believe we do have some that are attending virtually as well. Jake Petroskewa Stewart, Irene Tyson with the Boudreaux Group, Melanie Brown with Restoration 52. There they are. Hi, guys. And I'll turn it over to Ryan.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for the opportunity to be here in front of you again this evening. Again, we, my colleagues may chime in from time to time. And for those of you, I'm across the room physically from Mr. Akers, who's monitoring the connection, so he'll let me know if you pop on and want to chime in. But again, my name is Ryan Bland, happy to be here before you this evening. Trying to get the... There it goes. There we go. As Holly stated, we had last been before you as part of this process back in November in a joint meeting with Planning Commission. There was a large push for stakeholder involvement up prior to that. We're not going to revisit all that, but kind of use that as a base of where we were jumping off and presenting to you today. The process has essentially worked as it should. Things have continued to be refined through the Planning Commission assessment of the document recommendation to you. And so our comments and the structure of this will highlight some of those as well as kind of some reminders of some of the base tenets of the plan and how it was put together, some of the rationale. So just, we're mostly going to get into kind of the meat and potatoes of the plan, so to speak. First, I want to jump onto the land use vision itself. This is one thing that has not changed since last time you had seen it. And that's Georgetown County is a diverse and resilient ecosystem of healthy coastal and river environments, fertile agriculture and forest lands, precious natural resources, unique cultural and historic resources, and established communities, neighborhoods, and local businesses and industry. The county is an exemplar of planning with infrastructure development that sustains, protects, and restores this diverse ecosystem while providing opportunities for economic development and prosperity for all residents. The growth and development reflected the quality design, unique character of the PD, Low Country, as well as the countywide ethic to ensure that the land is sustained for generations to come. So we hit on a lot of the big topics that came out. And so this provided of the public input and provided us a path forward as we start to get into the analysis of some of those things and a way to move forward through the plan. We use some guiding principles, which haven't changed as part of the process either. But it's good to go back over those. And that the diversity of Georgetown County must be recognized, celebrated, and preserved with land use policies and strategies. Natural resources are sacred and of utmost importance. Compatible development and redevelopment are critical, particularly with increasingly limited development opportunities on the Waukesha Monday. A prosperous economic future depends on local workforce and availability of affordable workforce housing to support local employment. Infrastructure and development must be coordinated, and that design matters and is a significant factor in ensuring compatible development. So with that said, I want to spend some time talking about the main, kind of the main avenue of the land use element, which is building that future land use map as well as the policies that go along with that map to try to ensure a path forward for the county. The basis of that is public input. We heard that community character is paramount, as well as natural resources and ecological resources, open space, and increasing stormwater issues was something that emerged as we went through the process, as an increasingly important thing through the public comments, particularly through the review period with the Planning Commission. The other component of that is that the community character component is that the county is predominantly single-family residential, and that that should still be a dominant land use within the county. So we also looked at established priorities of plan elements. We looked at existing and historic land use patterns and character. We conducted a suitability analysis based upon environmental constraints, proximity to infrastructure, and proximity to related uses or uses that would be kind of co-existent. And then defining some of these local places and place types. So again, this is part of a whole of your comprehensive plan. The land use element is just a part, but it is an important part. You've done a lot of work leading up to this. We talked about in the population element, being able to use that as a basis moving forward. You've got an increasing population. You're not growing as fast as most of coastal Carolina. And that growth has kind of started to maybe show some signs of plateauing. Historically, it's still growing. Transportation, people want increasingly connected places, community facilities. It's about relationships with service providers and how you handle infrastructure and how you address things like transportation needs with the OT and how you work with service providers for water and sewer and those sorts of things. Cultural resources was a big issue. Recognizing and supporting culturally important and historic locations and resiliency, be able to kind of use this as a holistic approach. We did use some of the background information from the natural resources element, which is still outstanding, but has a lot of good data in it. And we are building on all of these elements as a baseline for the plan. Two extremely important elements that I had not touched on are the housing element and the economic development, which are intertwined in your future for a prosperous economic future and a sustainable housing source for the county for time to come. The housing element spells out in the housing needs assessment that accompanied that. It was a five-year projection done four years ago. At that time, you need an additional 2,200 homes for sale with about 65% of those needing to address 80% area median income households or below. The housing needs assessment established that there were 670 rental units necessary, and roughly 500 of those were at that same 80% area median income below. So when you're talking in the county, that's 80% is, we have here the median income at the time of the study was 75,500. So 80% is around $60,000, a little over $60,000. That's your workforce. But that also ties to your economic development in that you need to, this plan needs to be able to address not only availability of future industrial product and where that's located, workforce centers, but also the workforce itself, workforce development, workforce housing. This plan, I will say at the onset, will not probably address all of that to the point that you have all the housing you need for the time to come, but it's trying to provide you a framework for how you can have housing choice in a manner that is reflective of traditional development patterns in the county while protecting existing neighborhoods.
Mr. Bland, quick question. That 75,5 AMI, how old is that number?
That was in the housing need assessment, so that's about a five-year-old number.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question also. Now, 75,000, do you have any idea of how much of a house that would equate to? When you talk with developers coming into the Georgetown area, desirous to build houses, what do they use as their dynamics on? What's the dynamics of people coming into Georgetown County? Income, retirees, et cetera, that determines? Well, if retirees are coming into these coastal counties, we're going to build to what the demand is. So if you have retirees with retirement income of 150,000 and 200,000, are they building to that dynamics?
So I think you lead me into my next slide, actually. So this is one thing that we wanted to drive home as well.
Before you go to the next slide, though, I have a question about the AMI also. I'm trying to see the angle as to what that really is based on. That figure is based on the entire county, is it not? The AMI figure that you have here is 75,5. That's based on the average.
That was a county-wide number.
Yeah, so it's really not, when you compare to the averages across the county, if you go to the western side, that income is not there at all. So it's not really a fair overlay.
Follow up on Chairman's question. Do we know what the AMI is for the western part versus the neck?
Holly?
I think the city is around, is 55 more of that number. I don't say that exactly, but that's what I recall, is it's more in the 50s range if you looked at a number for the city as opposed to countywide. As we know, the Waukesha Monique is going to kind of inflate our number. The housing element does break it down into the Waukesha Monique and the western portion, so I can certainly find that number for you.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yes?
That is correct. It is skewed, of course, by the Waukesha Monique side of the house. From a development intent, whenever we're working with a development partner that is looking to help to close the affordable housing deficit or tangible housing deficit, they want to use the number that the federal government teaches, which is that HUD number. And so they will take 80% of that AMI and say, our units meet that number, which doesn't necessarily meet the needs of your broader workforce. And so that's some of the challenges, of course, that we've experienced throughout this study and some of the recommendations of trying to get at truly the need that you have as it relates to your workforce.
And I'll just kind of chime in on that. To, one point is, yeah, like, you know, Andrews, that sense of strikeout there, the area median income is only like 37,000. So that's much lower than the 75. And then I think, you know, what Ryan was trying to also get at is just, well, and I think one of the questions was, what are developers looking at? You're exactly right, Melanie. They have to meet those targets if they're going to qualify for certain, you know, funding and that sort of thing. But a lot of developers, and you'll see this in the next slide, a lot of the housing that's come to the market is not meeting the needs of that under 80% AMI.
Right.
Can I make a comment, please? I heard today, and I listen to this stuff every day, the AMI nationwide right now, to be able to afford a house, whether it's a $100,000 house or whatever, is $51,000. That's got to be the income. So there's your baseline right there, I think, as far as that's concerned. And something else, looking at these figures that were done, what, three or four years ago, you said? You got to remember too, that in the first six months of 2021, our economy fell off the cliff. And this affordable housing thing has just become more and more critical over the last three and a half years. So we're in an area now that is, we're plowing new ground, as we would say in the South. No doubt about it. And I just, I'll say that about that subject. And another, I've got a question for you, sir. When you started this thing, as you said, you understood that we had two totally different demographics in this county, one on the east side of the Waukesha River and one on the west side. And we, I don't see how, or maybe I'll ask you this. Do you say how you can form a plan without having two plans, one for the Waukesha Monique and one for the rest of the county?
It's not two plans, it's one holistic plan. But as you divide up, and we'll get into this as far as the presentation, as you start to look at the characteristics of place types, they become different place types. And that's a lot due to use of the land, for one thing, but also just traditional development patterns and things like that. So you do find two different types of development historically on the county. And I don't think we can go without recognizing that as part of this plan.
Did you start, when you began looking at this and the plan for the next 10 years, were there any, a few maybe basic goals of things that you wanted to accomplish in the county and work towards those goals with the plan? And if they were, what were those goals?
I mean, I don't think we walked into it necessarily with anything preconceived other than a lot of what was established in your prior plan documents. So doing those updates to those existing elements and doing that research, so some of that are already set, some policy, we tried to find a way through this process, along with the public input, about how that relates to the land use element specifically. So we're not going back and revisiting the housing element, so to speak, but we're trying to figure out how you take the housing element information, support it with land use as part of that.
I understand that. And I guess I was really speaking of the land use plan itself rather than just a housing portion, portion of the housing element. So what about, what about the answer to that question, the land use plan?
So I do have, I do have a point in the presentation further on where we walk through how we kind of came to some of the land use decisions and the mindset and the method of doing that. And a lot of that did come out of the public engagement part of this process about what was important to people.
Okay, so you've done that. That was, that was what I was interested in, is did you have some goals? And looking at the overall situation in our county, which are very unique, some goals that you were going to try to reach, and the answer is yes.
Yeah, there was definitely an approach that we wanted to take.
Thank you.
More of an approach and a methodology and a way of thinking about how to apply the different concepts that came up and issues and aspirations, and how do you translate those to the plan?
Thank you, sir.
All right, so kind of jumping back in here. There we go. So this gets to kind of some of the issues that you were talking about, about what you're basing in the housing market here. Essentially, countywide, if you take mobile homes out of the equation, it's about 75% single-family residential, 25% condo. These graphs are from the the local associations and realtors. They track housing prices, and you can see the, if, in case you can't read that, these graphs both start at 2014 and go to current. On the left side, you're dealing with single-family properties, that top blue line are trends on the Pauli's Island, Litchfield area specifically, and that lower blue line is your your mainland or more aggregate number, I guess. Same way with townhomes and condos. And the percentage there is your split of of kind of distribution of those in the county. So again, we're talking about single-family homes that 10 years ago were a little over $300,000 on in the Waukamau Neck area. Now, that, if you can't read it, that top number is between 600 and 700,000. In the mainland portion of the county, it was under 200,000. Now it's approaching 350. On the townhouse condo market, as you can see there, it's even kind of more aggressive as as that is. A limited, a more limited product and a product that's going to be in more demand as people look at for housing choice. The bottom of there, that is between 100 and 150 there at the 2014 number, but as you see, that that is approaching $350,000. And we have an example, you know, just kind of went to Zillow and found a good example because it's a, you know, something we use in the plan that's kind of one of the, actually one of the higher density types of developments that are actually a place type in this plan is kind of a, this is a four-plex, this is Rose Run. This isn't, it's not the specific unit, but the names have been changed, and and so there's some anonymity there, you'll probably find it, but that shows that this unit in 2014 had sold for 141,000, now being listed at 335. So just another, again, indicative of why a sustainable housing approach has to be thought out as part of this process. Where do you have the opportunity to provide some of this kind of housing choice without impacting neighborhoods, without, with being able to maximize things like availability of of services to those locations where you're not necessarily having to get, you know, necessarily out on the highway, add to traffic? Where is there infrastructure to support those? And we'll get into kind of some of those decisions. Melanie, just checking real quick, do you have anything you would like to add?
No.
All right. So the kind of the second part of the process, again, is we heard a lot about natural resources and infrastructure. So that was part of the analysis as well. So we took a look at those factors as well as some land use patterns and came up with this this idea of suitability. And that's where infrastructure and natural resources, and particularly in the case of commercial and residential, use to some extent gets in there because, you know, where is housing convenient to services or jobs, that sort of thing? So that makes it high, more highly suitable. So that was one analysis that was done as a baseline. Where do you have infrastructure to support it that is not in conflict or not in high conflict with natural resources? And because of the diversity of the county, we did go out and try to, we, this is kind of more part of our methodology, and just to kind of let you in on the on the backside of what we did is, we kind of broke it into bite-sized segments and tried to look at, you know, is there a unique character here, is there unique place types to be able to conform that future land use map? And one of the things we heard is particularly in interactions with what I'd call the mainland side of the county, but also parts of parts of the Waukamau Neck as well, is that unique places here need to be reinforced, existing communities, and how do you do that with the future land use, the use plan? Density came up a lot, so we tried to kind of survey what the density of these place types were. There's a lot of density numbers thrown out there. So I kind of wanted to go through examples of what we were looking at as we sampled some of those to be able to understand that as we put the plan together. So in one case, that that one to three dwelling unit snake, are you seeing there on the top? That's kind of your rural residential neighborhood typically. We took an example here out of Pleasant Hill, but there's a couple other examples here in the in the slides that you'll see. When you kind of hit the more urbanized, I'm trying to say urban transition or even suburban areas of Georgetown, you start to kind of get into that one to five. And so I say one to five because you do have some, you know, gated communities, golf course communities that are close to that one to two to three range typically, but some other kind of more standard neighborhoods reach up into that five, sometimes six range, but we kind of worked that number up and down a little bit and 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 kind of located that in that one to five range for for kind of that type of housing. Your next examples are as you kind of move, I would say, either to the infill, fairly, not too distant past type infill, or as you kind of get proximity to major transportation corridors, you start to see kind of the two to six range, the four to eight range. Most of the time, you're still in that single-family type of development in that in that range using that density, which is another change that happened as part of this. So originally, when we had talked to you, we were using the concept of growth density. We just, you know, how many houses over a large period, a large area? That's something that's commonly used in a in a in a future land use plan, just because it's easy to kind of calculate over broad areas, you're talking about broad policy decisions. We understand that county residents are used to the net density, which takes out things like roads and stormwater structures and and natural elements, floodplains, that sort of thing. So we tried to kind of massage the numbers to make sure that that was consistent with the way the county had been practicing. But again, these are, these are kind of that, you know, eight and below. Again, mostly, you still end up either with single-family, some duplexes, and at this point, you're mostly talking about lot size. And in this case, it's, you know, as you look at this kind of two to six example, South Bay Village versus this Tidings Trail Development, they kind of just have a shorter rear yard, that sort of thing. It's not like a a massive development, but that's a couple of dwelling units per acre that goes into that calculation. So again, we're below eight units an acre, we're typically still talking about mostly single-family housing.
So Ryan, the conundrum we're faced with is the more units you can put on a piece of property, the cheaper that unit will be versus the fewer units. And we want fewer units, but we also want cheaper properties, and that ain't going to happen.
Right. And so we're trying to strike that balance, and you're right, it's difficult and it's a conflict as we move forward, to try to figure out what those kind of ranges are, work through the public interest, work with staff, work with planning commission to try to, as I go into the place types, which is kind of our next part of the presentation, is kind of where are some of those located and and where do you have some opportunities for something that's a little more of a mixed, I would say, type unit? And it's in, and I'll go ahead and go into that that next slide. So the other types, again, this is just us observing kind of what's out there, not necessarily, this is not necessarily prescriptive at this point, this is kind of just us studying the county as part of this process. Is your townhome type development, so this is the Gullaway Town Home, is a really nice product, which is why I like to use it, it's a nice picture. But eight to 12 units an acre is kind of what you're talking about there. And then your typical, what people would say, your three-story condo or or apartment is you're talking about 12-plus. And I will go ahead and say that through the the public hearing process and and changes made to the plan, that kind of got increasingly worked out of the plan, so it's available in very few places. And that was, again, something that there was a lot of outcry that there didn't want to be a lot of three-story apartments up and down Highway 17, that that's all you see as you as you come through the area. And so we tried to strategically locate those, and I'll get into that kind of as the next part of the presentation.
Is it, in some of the other counties that you guys have worked in and been around, is it, when you get to, and I'm speaking just on the western side now, when you start developing your rural areas, is it possible to have select areas where you do multifamily to get the affordable housing in there, workforce housing, as you would say? And just have them located throughout the county versus continuously up 701 north, you know, to Yohanna? I mean, does does counties do that, you know, and then have the, have it a little more spread out so it's not so congested?
Yep. We have a.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that was part of what we heard early on the process. There is two different kind of situations. There's what's going on the neck, and that that really needed to be more focused on growth management. And then there's the western part of the county where, you know, there's there's some growth management, but they're also encouraging some some more residential growth that maybe has typically occurred in in the right locations. And then also protecting some natural resources in other locations. So that that is kind of baked into the land use plan, and Melanie will also elaborate on that when we talk about housing opportunity areas, and most of those are on the, you know, west of the river.
I have a question. Now, if there's a move to create development on the western part of the county, and then land is cheaper on the western part, however, to find that right formula for whatever's called affordable, I'll call it young professional workforce housing, what is that? You got 46 counties, every county has an AMI, every AMI equates to how much of a house you can build. Same premise on the Waukamau Neck, if the movement is to come over here, as I mentioned, if you're dialoguing with other developers and they're looking at the demographics of who's moving to Georgetown County, and if they want to create something similar to what's over the neck, that possibly can come on this side also.
No, that's correct. And we try to make sure that the housing types, that they could occur. A lot of that is also tied to particularly, and we'll get into this a little bit, and Melanie can can chime in if she would like, but the resources for true, like for actual affordable housing, the the money to get financed, so to speak, to be able to cut down the cost between what it costs to build and what you're going to be able to make from it as a developer, to be able to make it affordable, that kind of takes a more holistic housing strategy. One thing that this plan has in there, it kind of dabbles a little bit in the housing element side, just to try to just augment that a little bit, is it does identify areas in the county where you might be able to find some of those advantageous partnerships because those areas and those funds go to places where, one, you can get some, typically some reasonable amount of density to to deal with cost and and price. But the other thing is availability of resources, jobs, they want to know, is it close to where I can go shopping? Are there government facilities nearby? And so Melanie did an analysis as part of this, kind of just a a broad brush, but to be able to identify where those kind of locations all come together, that to develop a actual affordable housing strategy for to target those types of units, where are where are good places to do that? Just to understand that as you move forward in land use, where are your optimal locations for that? But as we said, just with market rate housing, as you saw that graph, I mean, as you as you all are aware, and and we are, some of that is supply and demand, a lot of it is supply and demand. Some of it's building costs, some of it's supply and demand. There's been a lot, a lot of demand to to come to this area. So that is part of what the, that type of unit, and it's just, as you saw with the townhome unit, for instance, hasn't kept up, and the numbers just keep going up as far as price.
Right.
So we're trying to find a balanced approach to finding locations where those types of things make sense, again, without getting into where there are, you know, not necessarily major conflicts with their natural resources, where there are infrastructure to support them as it is. So part of that goes into that land use map, the methodology of that.
Ryan, the examples of the density, the eight to 12 and 12-plus, how many of those type areas do we have in Georgetown County right now? Roughly.
Um, they're almost all going to be on the Waukamau Neck, certainly. Eight to 12, we probably have numerous, that's your the Gullaway, that would probably be Rose Run and Pauli's Place. I'm really talking off the top of my head here, but maybe eight of those. More of the three-story, those would be those condos at Wilbrook, we've had the Village at Pauli's Island right there beside the bridges at Litchfield, those are three-story condos. There are some three-stories at Sunnyside, three-story, Waterleaf, Phase One has three stories, Litchfield Oaks has three stories, so maybe six or seven of those. I'm not sure where the older ones would fall, like Salt Marsh Cove and South Cove. They may be on that upper end, too. And of course, Litchfield by the Sea, that's a planned development, so those density numbers are are higher.
Any idea what the cost per unit, rent, or owner-wise?
Like a monthly rent rental?
Yeah, just curious to see.
You know, I think even Waterleaf, the newest, was at around 1,500 or so, last time I checked, which has been a while, so that very well may have changed.
Is that one-bedroom, or do you know?
I think most of those are two or three.
Two or three.
I have another question. Thinking about metrics, we talk about units per acre, dwellings per acre, we talk about the size of our buffers, how complex the infrastructure is, do we have parking, do we have all these things that are considered? I've never heard anybody talk about the number of people per acre that is critical mass. Can you tell me anything about that?
I mean, I would, I don't have the analysis right, yeah, with me right here in front of me. I mean, you're talking, the the number of people per home in median in the county is lower than many. I think it's in the two, two.
2.1.
Yeah, in the low twos. That number used to be a bit higher, is probably closer to the three range, but it's continued to kind of decline.
Well, I asked that question because down in Mount Pleasant, they started having the problem that we're having on the Waukamau Neck now, probably 20 years ago, in that, you know, they've got a narrow strip of land down there, and it's turned out to be a nightmare. And the only thing that they came close to resolving that with was a six-lane highway right up the middle of it, that's like having another big river separating the west from the east. And we have a four-lane highway now. And whenever we are approached about increasing that that thoroughfare from four lanes to six lanes, people go crazy. But yet, we're getting to the the point, just with infrastructure, that we've got too many people. And that's the reason I asked that question, because I've never heard any of you folks in planning use that metric before.
I think what you're saying is kind of, what is the period capacity of the Waukamau Neck?
That's a good way to frame it, yes, sir. So for me, I've lived there for 24 years, and I think we reached critical mass about six, seven years ago, but we haven't slowed down.
Yeah, that's kind of what I've heard early in the process, and that's why we're kind of leaning more towards the growth management side of things and our our policies and recommendations on the neck compared to kind of west of the river.
So did you just say that you are considering that issue based with with changes to infrastructure, which everybody seems to be against?
Certainly, that's a major factor in the need for growth management on the neck.
Thank you.
All right, so moving into the future land use map and and as part of the land use element, these were presented to you previously, and they're essentially kind of the same organization, but I'll go go through these in some more detail. So the, we use in this, instead of just low density, medium density, high density, frankly, many of the places in the of the places in the county, as you try to describe the nature of development and future, it's a little more nuanced than that. It's a little more mixed. There's businesses intertwined with residential. There's industrial uses, you know, where are the appropriate locations for those? So we tried to look at those and try to categorize them in a meaningful way that you could use to move forward. So talking about the rural framework, I'm going to start on the rural side of the land use. Again, just looking at land use, but we're calling this rural, it's not necessarily all mainland, but primarily. Are the conservation agriculture use, so this is things that are, pieces of land that are typically under conservation easement. We tried to get a good list of where those are. So where you see those, where, you know, we have some reasonable amount of information that those properties either are under conservation easement, or are there some other factor that would cause them to be considered as conservation agriculture use? So those are typically primarily agricultural in nature. Residences are kind of supportive of that. So this is not, you know, a neighborhood, this is a prime kind of agriculture or conservation land. And then talking about the rural residential, so these are kind of your one home on a large lot type thing that you see out in rural areas, less than a unit an acre. A lot of times, you'll have kind of supportive businesses or rural uses alongside those. They have a low dependence on having water and sewer availability, because you can do a well in a septic system and typically to minimal impact and low transportation demand.
Ryan does a map that we're using. Does it, is it listed on here, the conservation easement properties? Is it, or is it grouped in with conservation agriculture?
So, yeah, conservation easement properties are grouped in with that conservation agriculture use. They might not all be that, they might just be something that's primarily an agricultural use, but the ones that are under conservation easement are, that we know of at the time of creating the map are listed, are designated that such. But these uses account for 77% of your landmass on the future map. So this is, these are kind of your dominant countywide uses. These have been tailored more specific than your prior plan. So for example, the conservation agriculture use was previously, I think, just listed as low-density residential, which is up to two units an acre. We think that's probably not a sustainable approach, to be able to kind of maintain the priority of agriculture properties and to recognize conservation easements as you think about land use moving forward, to be able to recognize those things. The rural residential, that's 26%, 144,000 acres. Again, those were either that low-density residential, or some were even medium-density residential. So again, two units an acre, three to five units an acre for that medium density, when in reality, this takes a more prescriptive approach in recognizing that these are, you know, typically large lot residential lots. So that's, I think, 435,000 acres of property between those two things. Moving forward, the other thing you see kind of on the rural side is something we're called a rural, we're calling a rural village, and this is kind of like a rural neighborhood. You know, these are one to three dwelling units an acre. We have an example here on Brick Chimney, Pleasant Hill, Choppy, you know, kind of can go to any of those quadrants and find places like this where there are, I would call them just kind of like little residential neighborhoods, some of them maybe four, five, six houses. Some of them are full-on subdivisions. And so we wanted to be able to kind of recognize those and kind of set some path moving forward. These are kind of locations where we're starting to get to density levels where you're going to prefer water and sewer. So those were factors in trying to look at those on the future land use map and evaluate And then you have what we're calling village centers, and these are really kind of the middle of the bull's eye for these little rural communities. The example we have up here on the map, it might be hard to read, but so this is Brown's Fair, out by Brown's Ferry Elementary, kind of that node. You have some institutional uses, you have, I think, a Dollar General out there, there's a convenience store, there's the school. So it's kind of a center of commerce, or could be as little center of commerce. And so we want to recognize that as such, and just know that you're going to, might have kind of a concentration of different types of uses out in kind of some of these rural areas. There is a counterpart that's kind of on the more urban side of things, too, that we'll get to in a little bit.
Is there any, in many areas in the western part of the county, is, a lot of the areas do have rural water, very few have sewer. We're making a little headway with that, but it's many, many years in certain areas before sewer reaches them. Even if they want it, you know, some areas will tell you, hey, we don't want it. Is there, developers, can they go in and have a self-contained sewer system that they build for development? Or do they need to be hooked up to not, I'm not saying individual septic tanks, but a privatized treatment plant with a development?
So to answer that kind of a more general way, because I've dealt with this in a past life as a planning director.
Okay, very good.
Is that, DHEC does not make it easy to operate a private sewer system.
Very expensive, I would think.
Yeah, they want it to be a publicly operated and maintained system. So again, that is a major factor, though, knowing that it would have to be a public line that serves some area, and that was, you know, again, factored in where is sewer, where could you reasonably predict, like, some concentrations of people at these nodes?
May I add to what my colleague mentioned? Are there possibly jurisdictional rights that would prevent a private entity to come in? The number of companies that can come in and build self-contained systems within populations in the community under 10,000. So there may be a bigger water sewer provider that has the jurisdictional rights over it, and that prevents such a thing happening.
That's an accurate statement, yeah. There are jurisdictions to sewer facilities and water sewer facilities, and it takes processes to change any of those balances.
Have you ever seen where two have worked together to solve a sewer problem? In your experience, have you ever seen that happen?
Trying to recall, very, not in my experience, mostly it's been...
On occasion, you know, in different situations. And, you know, seeing it work out and be sustainable, I mean, there's a number of private, you know, systems in coastal areas that, you know, are still going. There's, some of those do tend to have more problems in terms of violations and that sort of thing, that the maintenance and sustainability of them long-term is sometimes problematic. But then again, a lot of the systems that are having problems were built, you know, a while ago, and keeping those up. So that is a concern, you know, with the private package plant and early in application, treatment, that kind of thing. Just the long-term sustainability and viability of it is really important. And I've seen some situations where, you know, the package plants or development has gone in and is successful still, and maintain that, and other times where a public system has had to take over, you know, those systems due to maintenance issues and violations and that sort of thing. So it's important if that does happen or go in, just the long-term maintenance is the focus, building things up to a certain standard, just in case, long-term, it would need to be taken over by a public system.
Thank you.
Let me ask, I guess during your studies pertaining to sewer in particular, most of the sewer within Georgetown County is provided by one particular entity, is that correct? And that's a special purpose district?
Mm-hmm.
And it's my understanding that the legislature makes the decision as to what jurisdiction they actually operate. So as far as entities working together, that does not exist in Georgetown, since we only have one provider?
Right. And I will just say, just kind of to bring it back to kind of our approach to this, is we had conversations with that provider as part of this process to make sure we understood where they serve and what future plans they may have. And that's the best information we have available right now, is we looked at that suitability for kind of intensification of certain areas. That's what we have to go for, the best information provided. But it's one of those things that as that information were to change, if there is an expansion, a significant change, I think, and we support that in here with some statements, that that would open it up to reevaluating that area specifically as part of your land use scheme.
Right.
Well, to add what a colleague mentioned, suppose there was an issue of a major health issue, and the cost by the majority water sewer provider, it seems like there would be dialogue to see if we could make it happen. I mean, if you're going to relieve the health situation, how do we relieve a health issue? And so it seems like check out all possibilities possible, that's it.
So we're going to move forward kind of into our neighborhood framework, is what we're calling it. Again, you have a conservation open space component to that, of there are some served lands within kind of the neighborhood context, but a lot of times, this ends up being some sort of public open space. Again, you have very limited residential uses. We have a place type we're calling covenant community as part of this, and that's just to recognize just how many planned developments that occurred over time in the county. We want to be able to recognize that and recognize those, because those kind of, they come with their own sets of rules and kind of evaluate it a different way as you look at changes to those. But just to be able to be consistent with kind of how those have been treated over time. We have a residential neighborhood framework. So this is, again, kind of more your typical residential neighborhood that you see in the county. We used a kind of a more urban and rural example here at the bottom, Hagley Retreat, Kensington, out by Kensington School, north of Georgetown. You know, these are typically, we found as we sampled, one to five dwelling units an acre, kind of depending on how they're designed and constraints to those when they're developed. Very little commercial uses, and once you get to these densities, you are typically looking, again, these are locations where we looked at whether our water and sewer are provided. And then we have this village center concept within neighborhoods. So these are kind of your small-scale commercial nodes, going kind of up and down 17. We tried to find a good example. Downtown Paulie's is kind of the one I took a photo of here as an example, kind of one of those. It's not a massive commercial center, but it is a commercial use, it's kind of at the edge of a neighborhood, kind of at a significant crossroads, but you might not have all the access that a major commercial center would need. But you almost might have an opportunity to have some sort of a town home component to that. Down to Paulie's is a good example, because they could have easily just had some residential units there on the top floor with the way it designed some of those buildings. But kind of as a standalone use, we use that Rose's Run next door as an example here, like a four-plex kind of example. Again, this is a place where you probably have infrastructure, you don't have necessarily, these are typically not larger lots. These typically are kind of smaller nodes, and so, but you would have a case where people would have access to walk to, you know, get dinner, goods and services, things like that. So it kind of cuts down on some of those externalities associated with, you know, some of the more attachiness, the slightly denser. But again, we're talking in that five to eight range, and that's typically kind of your town home type development, or less. And then we have kind of this concept of corridors and gateways. So your major corridors typically had a different development pattern than the neighborhoods. The first one I'm going to talk about here is residential mixed use. A good example of that is kind of the way that Degula Way was developed. You have kind of some townhomes on the backside, but on the front, you have less intensive commercial uses. And a lot of that is kind of your, whether it's integrated like that, typically on the Walkham on Neck, you see those kind of separated but adjacent on that second row of properties off of 17. First row is kind of your more commercial, these are kind of like, start to be this neighborhood transition, but that's kind of where you see that four to eight dwelling unit density historically, and where some of those that Holly had mentioned have occurred. But there's typically also little businesses mixed in a lot of those places as well, offices, things like that.
Ryan, real quick, jumping back to the village center, you've got it listed as five to eight DUAs. In the draft that I've got, it's four to eight. Did we change that from five to four? I know we dropped it from six to 10. I thought we dropped it from six to 10 to four to eight.
That is just a scribbler's error on my part. Thank you very much. Yeah, four to eight.
And realistically, Paulie's will have something lower density than that threshold as well.
It becomes a lot about suitability of the property, is what really kind of drives that, and kind of how it's configured and things like that. So it's got its limitations, but this allows some, a little bit of creativity of how you can address that.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe just to have that kind of opportunity. The next one I want to talk about is this community mixed use. So these are your major commercial centers. Use Woodside Village here as an example. I think we have maybe four locations that satisfy kind of this place type. They're all typically an established commercial center with a large grocer. So what this allows the opportunity to do is for those to become a mixed-use development with, this is where you get into that eight to 12 dwelling units an acre. Ideally, you would have that incorporated as part of a commercial facility, like you see kind of there at the top examples from other locations. But it's not unforeseen that you could have a condo or some sort of development also that could be incorporated in some of those in some way, where there's not a lot of available property in those to do that sort of thing. So it would definitely have to be something creative and something that somebody would do as part of redevelopment of site. But just recognizing that these are areas that are typically well-served by, you know, you already have usually larger traffic lights, turn signals, those sorts of things. You already have kind of large-scale infrastructure as part of that. Again, just a really, really limited availability for some intensification of those, where, again, I'm not, if I live there, I can walk to dinner, walk to get my groceries, I'm not getting out as often onto the major transportation corridors other than to go to work, or maybe not that. I will say that these are typically desirable, this is probably not your affordable housing. This is something that somebody's going to live in as a lifestyle decision. They're typically highly, if somebody were to develop that sort of concept, highly desirable. So in no way will the Walkham on Neck be inundated with high-rise multifamily. This is kind of the one limited, kind of, yeah, like, I think it's, yeah, I think it's three locations of well-established commercial centers, where you do kind of have a lot of those factors that come together. And you can start to see some of those economies of being able to have people living closer where they work at a smaller scale, or where they shop, or where they get their services. We did keep a traditional commercial corridor. A lot of the dwelling units an acre as a part of this, this is part of the discussion, the idea is that these would be kept as primarily commercial. These are most of the properties along major transportation corridors, but maybe not quite as well-served as the prior land use type, place type. The dwelling units associated with this, we essentially just carried forward some of the existing county zoning vernacular about what was that two to four dwelling units an acre under the zoning scheme for those sorts of properties. We stayed consistent with that as part of the recommendation on this. If you were to do a true mixed-use project, there is an availability to go a little more denser. And you do have a couple of those where you do have people like living up above a place where they work, a lot of times, or a business that they own. And then we have an employment center. So these, this is kind of a combination of what you'd call a business park or an industrial park, but it also wants to recognize other kind of, like, if you were to have, I guess, a large-scale office use, maybe even hospitals, things like that, that are more intensive employment locations, could kind of fall into this category. We, you know, it's not called industrial, industrial kind of is part of this, but it's not the only part of this. It's just a recognition that these require, you know, kind of major trans... It's just a recognition that these require, you know, kind of major transportation typically. They need to be well-served by water and sewer and you need to kind of know where they are to be able to locate other uses in proximity to them. And finally, we didn't, we kept the Georgetown port as its own thing. We know that's still an emerging issue and things to decide with regard to that. But I think it does help to give some guidance in that, you know, it's it's in such a location that it needs to be somewhat complementary of downtown Georgetown. You have opportunity to kind of mix a number of uses if you wanted to, based on the size of that site and location, it'd be really desirable. So we just, we have that in here as it's kind of its own designation to just understand it's a special case and it's still something that's being worked.
But the plan for the for the port here, this is just something that that you all did as a sideline? Is that the way I understand that, you know, with walkability and mixed use and?
We didn't go in specifically, we just knew that it was an emerging thing. It was, those were some of the aggregating some of the public comments at the time that we went through the public comment period about different things that people had mentioned that they wanted to see as part of that. So that's the way it was described in this. But again, it was treated as its own, its own use type, knowing that that's still still something that that needs to be ultimately decided.
It's kind of a placeholder to give us some flexibility as we move forward with planning.
I understand. I just, I just wanted to, for the record, to know that this was not something that you really had focused on.
Correct. We wanted to recognize it again as an emerging issue and as one where frankly, it's so kind of unique in the county, we treated it as its own place.
Thank you.
Brian, with the Georgetown port and the commercial corridor, do we have height restrictions on that?
So we did, we took at the previously in the early drafts that went to the planning commission, we had different height kind of recommendations in there. We found out that as part of the public comment, a lot of people were assuming that everything would be built to the maximum, which is confusing because that's practically not the case. So we took those out of it and instead are deferring to zoning to ultimately decide that. This plan does have language in there to support existing height limitations on 17, for instance.
Holly, what's the height restriction?
The height restriction countywide is 35 feet from the grade to the midpoint of the roof, but we do have exceptions for height in the industrial districts, which in this case would equate to the employment districts. And the hospital, I think, has its own exception for height as well. But the main height throughout the county is 35 feet. We do have also buildings in a flood zone. I should mention that as well. We have exceptions for those.
Okay, so the commercial corridor, we couldn't go nine stories?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I don't think this document would support that.
Okay, thank you.
So we essentially took it out of the place types description and put it as a textual recommendation as a policy instead.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so to talk about some of the scheme of how the it was decided, kind of how the land use map developed by using these place types, when looking at the, what I'm calling the mainland portion of the county, it's driven a lot by conserve lands, your natural resources, your transportation corridors, again, locational availability of infrastructure. We, as part of this, needed to recognize where those existing communities are. That's one of the big things that came out of the public input is that to not, in some way, caused displacement, but to reinforce those types of places and continue to let them kind of grow more organically as they have over time. But also providing opportunities for job centers and housing within the mainland portion of the county where there is known infrastructure and things like that to support it. And again, that that leads into other decisions about where you put residential or commercial uses nearby, trying to cluster those in a way that makes sense on that part of the county, trying to come up with a relationship between jobs and housing again. Moving specifically to the walk of my neck, again, kind of going to your question about did we treat, you know, this as two different plans, not specifically, but there were definitely more comments that came out specifically about the walk of my neck, and so those were addressed as part of the plan as well. The idea is to preserve low and medium density residential as the predominant land use, to recognize existing commercial institutional and employment uses, to reduce overall density in the place types we're using. So again, we're, our highest densities that we're using are more limited than the current zoning would allow in many, many cases. It advocates for preservation of open space for golf course properties. That came up specifically, mostly as a foreseen thing. We've got a lot of questions about, hey, what do you know that we don't know? Was there something turning over? No, but we want to, and communities that do have a large number of those types of properties are starting to put these kinds of policies into place that we are treating those like they are open space in the sense that that's the way, if I'm living next to one, that's the way I'm viewed. So as we evaluate future land use for that area, if it were to ever come up as part of a public hearing, it says, no, this is, this is something that the neighborhood is treated as an open space element of, it needs to be somewhat treated the same way moving forward with any changes. And again, the one thing that got kind of added in as a more, more emerging issue is to be able to develop small area plans as you move forward for areas that are worth additional look. One thing, one area that came up often is the Merle's Inlet Marsh Walk, for instance. It had changed a couple of times and we had it more of a village center, but we received some opposition to there being a possibility of residential encroachment with having that as a, as a future land use designation. So it got changed to more of a commercial use, that commercial corridor use instead. But we want to recognize that it's probably worth going in and looking at that specifically and coming up with when, if and when zoning is revised and updated to come up with something tailored specifically to that area. But one thing that this plan does, it advocates, we heard a lot about this general residential designation and how the flexibility for residential density is problematic, particularly with how broadly it was zoned. So this plan would advocate for down zoning about 1,000 acres or more of that on the walk of my neck to some other zoning designation to come up with that would be more appropriate for those locations. And I'm going to walk into just a kind of.
Can I stop you right there for just a minute? What you just said, I, I'm elated to hear you say that, that we, you know, we've had our basic low, medium, high residential zoning ordinances for 20 years without any changes. You're aware of that, right? And we have, we have changed, grown on the neck. And one of the things that I know my colleagues down the line here want to make sure of is that we don't make the same mistakes when we start to build on the western side of the county that we did over here. When we started, the county really didn't even have any zoning. The council of governments did all that. And so we did, we had a very soft foundation to build on. And in my opinion, living here for 24 years and being on council for a while, we've made some mistakes. So I'm very happy to hear you say that in, what was it, 1,000 acres over there you felt like needs to be down zoned?
Correct.
Okay. How is that going to impact that, that metric that I asked you about called people per acre? Because I'm on the GSATs committee too, we do all the infrastructure stuff. And like I said, we've, we've got things that we want to do, but at the end of the day, most of the folks don't want to see a six-lane highway. They didn't want to see one when we put the median strip in the middle of it, and that got me fired several years ago. So I'm very sensitive to that also. So I'm anxious to see the details of what you're thinking about doing with that, with that 1,000 acres. That would be very interesting to me. So if you can bring me up to speed on that after the fact, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
And again, that's something we're kind of working through right now with the county to be able to do some of that analysis of, of kind of the ramifications of that based on, you know, kind of what current zoning would allow and, and what the kind of the new kind of thought process toward these place types and what the impact would be as far as, you know, dwelling units and locationally. But I can kind of go through just a quick example of one of those issues that we ran into and kind of the thought process that goes behind how these place types are located. So this is the stretch of 17. There at the intersection of Waverly and 17, you see, you know, Walkham Elementary School and High School there on the kind of left side. Those, those medium red, those are your kind of established commercial centers through there. The pink is where that Fresh Market Commons Shopping Center is and downtown Paulies. You see one of our dark red, our community mixed use down there, Paulies Island Plaza where Publix is. And then in the blue there that you see kind of behind there on that second tier, so that's Commerce Drive and, yeah, Tiller that kind of have that, I'd call it kind of a light industrial mix there. So to be able to recommend in that, get that kind of little intensification of that. But then, and again, kind of north of Paulies and between that, you have that Rose Run that kind of fits that, that medium density category where you have a mixture of smaller homes and townhomes. So this is recognizing kind of how that, as you move off of 17, you kind of hit that mix of, of, of commercial and residential uses and a little bit more, more density and away from the neighborhoods, but closer to services and those sorts of things. The problem, problematic area is that I didn't overlay this with an air photo, but that hatched area that you see is where that GR zone district currently resides. It allows a lot of flexibility and density. This is also one of those locations where if you did look at a air photo, a lot of that swath kind of between the elementary schools and those, those existing developments on that first and second tier off 17, a lot of it's still green. Some of that, that's an area that still has some developable property in it. So again, getting some of that, knowing that the preference is to concentrate on making sure we're reinforcing existing neighborhood types while still allowing some opportunity for those, those housing choice type units, townhomes and things like that in appropriate locations. But this would, as you can see here, advocate for taking several of those properties within that specific area out of that designation.
So that's based on the properties with the hash marks on them?
Right, those hash marks are that GR zone. So we were looking at things like that. Where are those, where are those located? Because that, that came up as such an issue as part of the public input. That was one of the main things that, one of the primary things that we had heard about, that it's, it just doesn't provide the predictability as far as what's going to be built there.
So basically where you see the hash mark and the light pale yellow would be an area that is basically this is recommending a down zone from a GR district.
Are the ones that are more of an orange, that's not necessarily the case then? I was just looking at the broad brush stroke of everything that had hash marks on it.
Yeah, in a broad sense, and Jake, you can help me out, I think that probably is still maybe a little bit of a down zone from that district.
Because that would be at eight units per acre, whereas.
What was that, Holly?
The orange, the recommendation for the orange would be at a maximum of eight units per acre. And, and as you know, GR allows up to 16 today. So even those would be.
I'm looking at three beautiful people now, so I've lost the map.
There you go.
Go ahead, Holly.
I think we can still hear you.
I'm sorry.
No, I was just saying, I think, and Jake can speak to this better than I, but the, the orange areas, those are up to eight units per acre. And so if it's hatched and it's orange, that is still recommending somewhat of a down zone because GR, as we know, allows for more than eight units per acre, up to 16.
Well, you know, one of those lies in the area, the piece of property we just finished having, going to war over there below Bahamik Shop. So that's, that's why I brought that up. Thank you.
Yes.
So again, kind of the benefit of that GR district is that was, that was one of your primarily, primary opportunities to provide some of that creativity, to provide the types of density and for affordable housing. So now how do we balance that with a more contextual approach based on suitability and existing development patterns and that sort of thing? So this is how we were trying to strike that balance is to be able to, again, find, find where contextually those sorts of developments have existed or have been, that was kind of, you know, 48 units versus more of a neighborhood.
With affordable housing, do you, by definition, you know, that's, it's a really broad stroke there. Do you consider affordable housing, housing that, that may be in a price range that's above the resident's capability so that part of the funding has to come from someplace else? When you say affordable housing?
I'm looking, is Melanie still on?
Yeah. Subsidies, if an individual needed housing subsidies to cover the payment.
Yes, that's correct. In other words, you know, if you've got, like, like I said earlier, if you're making below $50,000 a year right now across the United States on average, you can't even afford a $100,000 home based on current economic factors. So if somebody wants to buy a house that's, that's got an income below 50K, they're going to have to get some help from somewhere else. And that's what I consider affordable housing, where they, they can't pull that load up by themselves. Is that correct?
But so for purposes of the planning, so affordable housing, the official definition that was used throughout the planning is housing where it does not exceed 30% of the person's income or cost in order for them to be able to pay for their housing. Can you all hear me? I'm not breaking up. Okay. And it doesn't, and it's applicable to individuals making at least 80% of the area median income or below. That's the broad brush definition of affordable housing. You then have the definition of workforce housing. So the workforce housing will be for individuals not spending more than 30% of their income that fit the bracket between 60% AMI of the area median income, up to 120% of the area median income.
A couple of caveats that I understand as far as workforce housing is that you have to be gainfully employed, you have to have your own transportation. Do you concur with those two limitations?
Not, no, not necessarily. So with workforce housing, transportation, that's an individual, if a person does have transportation or not, is really driven off of the individual's income. From an affordable standpoint, now when you start to talk about what we consider deeply affordable, and so deeply affordable is typically when you start to get into your project-based vouchers or your subsidy types of programs for deeply affordable housing. That's an individual that is earning 40% or less of the area median income. But I'm going to put emphasis on earning, so that does still mean that the individual is, is a part of the workforce to be in your services industry, your hospitality industry. They are earning an income, but the income is so low that it requires some level of subsidy.
That's, that's, that's the way I understand it. So, you know, they, they need help from somewhere. And that's, you know, that's, that's what we're struggling with here now. From what I've heard from the folks that I've talked to or they're in the business, the best thing that in any like Georgetown County can do would be to supply the land for that, for that, for that, that home. Does that make sense?
From a development standpoint, the more that you can get the cost of the land out of, out of the deal, the better. And so it does make sense from that perspective.
So that could, that could make, that's not a deal breaker then, that's a deal maker.
It could be, it could actually be a deal maker for sure, but it also could be a deal breaker depending on what side of the point you're standing on.
Yeah, thank you.
But again, kind of what this plan tried to do is to provide a systematic approach to housing overall that's more sustainable. And also recognizing that there are some cases where you need to know where the opportunities are to be able to utilize. are to be able to utilize some of those resources strategically. And that typically requires partnerships with the development entities, people who are knowledgeable in using the different resources to, again, drop that gap down in what that really means. So, and that's not uncommon for coastal communities to be dealing with. They've, it's an emerging issue all over.
Yeah, well, that's the major problem we're having over on the Walkamon Neck as far as workforce housing or anything else is that between supply and demand, that's driving the price of the dirt and that makes it tough for us to do anything over there, although we'd like to do it.
Correct.
Thank you.
Before we go much further, Holly, when we were talking before about the density, I know you put together a thing about density in other areas. Can you review that real quick just for the people that are home? Do you know, do you remember off the top of your head?
Density, oh, in other jurisdictions?
Yeah, whereas, you know, our highest density is Cap versus Ori or Myrtle Beach.
Sure. I think the highest density, of course, that's proposed in this document is up to 12 units per acre. Ori County, the, it was my understanding that the most recently constructed units over off 707 were built at 20 units per acre. They allow some additional, if you do some sustainability categories, which apparently those projects did, so they were built at 20 units per acre. And Myrtle Beach is in their, I guess, commercial district or their higher density district is at about that same number. So we don't approach Myrtle Beach or Ori County's highest density numbers with this document at all.
Okay, thank you.
Affordable housing that would allow you to get a little bit, a few more dense, a few more units per acre if you kind of enroll the program, that sort of thing. But again, it would still be below that.
The next portion of this I want to go through is, there are a number of recommendations that also go along that kind of are above and beyond just the land use place type descriptions. And so we wanted to go through some of those because I think they are important. Well, one is this concept of maintaining community character. So the plan advocates for creating a zoning and land use system that promotes the compatibility of existing character of different locations throughout the county. So it does advocate for revising the zoning ordinance. It advocates for targeted rezoning. It talks about the golf course issue again, to be able to maintain that as, or protect that as open space, maintaining low and medium density as a predominant uses on the Walkamon Neck, to maintain those Highway 17 corridor standards, so those design standards with height limitations and design requirements, pursuing small area plans and then supporting historic and cultural preservation. So one thing I didn't really go into detail in this is the concept of the cultural overlay district where if you can define in some of these unique places, certain land use characteristics that add to that, the identity of that area, to be able to spell those out in a zoning overlay. There we go. Again, we heard a lot about natural resources and open space, so this promotes being able to, to design usable and require usable open space. We heard a lot of people say, hey, there's a lot of great natural resources, we don't have access to them all. So where you can to be able to promote open space, it carries forth a target of a 50% open space for undeveloped property on the Walkamon Neck. And as you look at, you know, how you would, at implementation of that, if you look at a lot of the existing properties that have not been developed, a lot of them have some natural resource reason or some constraint that has made them difficult to develop. And so looking back at prior studies that you had done, this kind of just carries forward some analysis that was done as part of that 17 corridor study that recognizes the limitations on developable land that continues to exist on the Walkamon Neck.
Can you go back one slide? I'm sorry to interrupt.
Go back one slide?
Yeah. I was trying to find it on the draft. For 17 on the corridor standards?
Yes.
On 4.5, it says, continue to protect aesthetic quality of Highway 17 and encourage walkability. And then you have 4.5A, which talks about the 90-foot setback. How do you address walkability when you have a parking lot with 90 feet in front of a building?
So that's a lot of, we're kind of laying the groundwork in of a concept and a place type. Once you get into the actual zoning ordinance is when you get into the details of how you might be able to implement that. That 90-foot setback is honestly something that does prohibit connectivity and walkability between a lot of those, a lot of those uses. So, but that is something that came up a lot through the...
I'm just thinking that that encourages the continuation of traffic.
Right. And I think this is, this is one of the things that was added specifically through the Planning Commission process as a result of some of the comments. That 90-foot setback was something mentioned regularly as something that people wanted to maintain that came and spoke at the public hearings. But we recognize as part of that, that there are other externalities, other ramifications with doing so. And that being one of them, it does make it more difficult to, you know, much wider distance if you're trying to cross 17 for some reason or something like that.
Was the Planning Commission made aware of the fact that when you have that setback, it doesn't allow for walkability?
We didn't talk about this, but we'd be advocating for a slightly more nuanced approach to setbacks along the 17 corridor whereby you would allow for some reduced setbacks in and around the village centers, you know, mixed use centers to encourage walkability in those areas. So I think that that still could be explored when you update the zoning, and we would advocate for that, but we, you know, do not have it explicitly in this, in this document at the moment.
Is from an ex, you guys are experts as with this, how does that impact the potential for the future when that's put into the land use plan?
Well, having it as land use, so these are all essentially recommendations and things weighed as future land use decisions occur. Your zoning ordinance and your overlay district are your ultimate map. There are a lot of tenants of that district, some concepts, like design concepts is that have been important. And so just working within that, that context and that framework, it doesn't prohibit you from making changes to that in the future, but it is...
I was just envisioning the old arcade game Frogger and just getting swished as you're cruising through.
Obviously, so just, yeah, a lot of like the commercial centers are kind of in proximity to each other, those village centers. All you could do to kind of reduce the distance between those helps with that avail, you know, the perceptiveness of being able to walk or the safety of being able to walk across to reduce that distance. So, so again, maybe, go ahead.
Ryan, I actually, I misspoke. It's still in, but it's just a softer touch, okay? And so if you look at kind of 4.5A, it says, continue the 90-foot setback along the majority of the corridor and the Walkamon Neck.
Okay, I see it.
And consider customizing supplemental standards for development along certain segments to accomplish goals of the lane. So that, what that is meaning is that in village centers, you might want to have an alternative frontage, you know, option. Now, I think one thing that we did here is people love the trees, they love the multi-use path, and we want to, we want to kind of honor that, but there could be a slightly different section whereby you still have some trees, you still have a multi-use path, but maybe there's a smaller setback. So you have this sense of arrival, you have a little bit more walkability in certain key locations. So that's, that's what it's trying to say and leave the door open for that more nuanced approach than just a solid setback. But we did want to honor, you know, kind of the feedback we had here and allow for some, you know, customized standard.
So from a, could we address that in the landscape ordinance? And I guess that's Holly, the walkability part?
Potentially, yeah. I think this, this language is kind of in keeping with the corridor study that's referenced here. It did mostly, again, because of the public input, we received support in maintaining the 90-foot setback in most areas. But again, it also looked at some key, I think they call them village intersections, where you might could look at deviating from that some.
And is this the only place from a corridor standpoint that that was recommended? Were there any other corridors like 701?
We particularly heard about the existing, existing overlay district and maintaining some of the tenants of that.
I think, I think I can talk to this. When we, when we were looking at that road expansion with a, with a center median, we were, our issue there was basically the land on either side of the right of way and the 90-foot setback was put there so that at some time in the future, if we ever did have to go to six lanes and a median in the middle, we wouldn't, we'd be, the setbacks are set into private property. So if we didn't have those there, we would have had a lot of structures in that area and over the last 10, 15 years. And if it got to the point where DOT decided that they wanted to do the improvement, they couldn't afford to buy that property. And we had one example up there at MLK and the intersection of MLK and 17. I wanted to put a loon in there so that we could turn tractor-trailer trucks around going from south back north, right there at that intersection. And that land on the, on the ocean side, the east side, was a half a million dollars an acre. And that took up too much of the money that was available to do the whole project. So that's kind of where that thought process came from. But we do have the authority to allow things like a bike path or whatever. If we could figure all that out, we can make, we own those changes, we can do that.
So the intent of the 90-foot setback was to widen 17?
Yeah, if it ever did have to happen. And of course, that's, that's on the drawing board right now. It's just that there was a lot of pushback from that. People didn't want to see that happen. But that's kind of where that came from. And you do have the authority to be able to, to put things in that area that would serve the public, but that could be removed fairly readily if the day ever came. Does that make sense?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
I would understand where 90-foot setback comes from and why.
Right.
So thank you.
One thing I was about to lead into on this is kind of the next tool that we have in here as a recommended consideration is the concept of conservation subdivisions. And Jake may want to kind of augment what I'm going to present here, but conservation subdivisions are kind of a recognition that we're trying to balance housing and natural resources, and it allows you the flexibility to work with lot size, configuration, design components to be able to preserve and conserve some of those natural areas as a trade-off. So it essentially gives you additional creativity in your design standards of a subdivision while being able to intentionally conserve some of those critical natural resources and usable open space, kind of getting back to that concept.
Question, again, on this, with the subdivision, the developments or whatever you want to call them. One of the problems we're having on the neck right now is that, you know, we've got a stormwater issue because our elevations are maybe maximum 16 feet above sea level. And so we have, we have a lot of issues regarded to just what the winds and the tides are as to whether the water's going to go to the west off 17 or to the east off 17. And that's basically because we've changed so much of our land from pervious to impervious over the years is that we're at critical mass on that. And I know we've got to do something about that in our, in our, in our future local ordinances to fix that. But have you, do you all, did you all consider stormwater in this planning?
Yes. So, yeah, and I'll get to that in a future slide. But specifically, these address that as well because one of the, you know, one of the primary factors in, in stormwater management of subdivisions is the roads associated with them. So if you can have a more compact design with that pervious, you know, space kind of more, or impervious space more limited, more open space to allow infiltration and things like that to naturally occur, that's to a benefit of the, of a stormwater issue related to kind of standard management of a subdivision. I saw Jake about to chime in.
No, I mean, that's right, Ryan. I mean, the infrastructure cost from a road perspective, but also the stormwater infrastructure cost, if you have the same number of units, but those units are on a smaller kind of footprint, you can capture and treat that more efficiently. Now, we're not saying, you know, you can have, you know, we're not suggesting a really significant density bonus or something like that, so you would have four times the amount of units. So all things being the same, you know, some small, some smaller lots versus medium-sized lots, but on a smaller footprint can be more beneficial, easier to treat, capture that stormwater.
And then the final thing I wanted, oh, go ahead.
I was just saying, I think, you know, this is something we heard that, you know, why don't we have this option? Why don't we have this conservation subdivision design option? And it's all on how it's, you know, written and employed in the zoning ordinance. But we did, you know, hear a lot about the need to protect large swaths of open space in the county on the neck and otherwise. And, you know, we are advocating for, you know, targeted, you know, preservation from nonprofit sector, public sector, but also utilizing the private sector for assembling, you know, connected open space in tandem with development. That is a huge, powerful tool for you to kind of be forward-thinking and look about how we can preserve a lot of the great natural resources, not just those that are protected, not just the floodplains and wetlands that you can't build on anyway, but also connected uplands in order to preserve areas for habitat, that sort of thing.
Question, Jake or Ryan? If you had an existing conservation easement, have you seen where there's a need to create this conservation subdivision where you take land designation out of an easement and you create a conservation subdivision?
Well, I mean, conservation easements are legal documents that pretty much specify if there's going to be any building allowed on those at, you know, when they're drafted. And a lot of times they do specify a certain number of home sites or that sort of thing. It doesn't necessarily mean, you know, there's no development. It's all about that unique property and the unique conservation easement. So, you know, that is set during the inception of the conservation easement. So I don't think that we would be, you know, talking about that, but I do think that these conservation subdivisions would be great where they're adjacent, where there's development adjacent to existing conservation easements, where you have protected lands and you don't want to put, you know, lots right up against that protected land and impact indirectly that preserved land, but you would buffer it with some open space and still accommodate some development, but maybe it would be clustered away from those natural resources.
Kind of conversely to that, I have seen cases where people have implemented this to the, to the, it has to be of a certain scale, but that you can put some of that land that you are conserving into conservation easement and therefore you reduce, you kind of subsidize some of the cost of that subdivision, maybe offering the ability to drive down cost a little bit because the developer can take advantage of the credits that go along with some of those.
Thank you.
And so finally, on this slide, I didn't want to gloss over it because it is an emerging issue, is that we do have some guidance in there for location and design standards for large solar facilities. We know that's been a hot topic and essentially the question of, you know, renewable resources are, that can be of a benefit, but at the cost of agricultural land and the character of an area, to be able to have some balance in there and some direction on how those are treated. in there and some direction on how, how those are treated. My next slide is on stormwater management. So the, one of the things in here, one of the recommendations in here is to implement the, the Walkamond Lake Stormwater Management Plan, which advocates for stormwater protection areas where you know there are problems, and to create what we would call like augmented or, or more tailored standards for, for those areas. Also talks a lot about establishing buffers for, for wetlands and floodplain and even locations reasonably predicted to be impacted by sea level rise through buffers to be able to preserve those in a way that you are addressing water quality as well as stormwater runoff. Exploring various programs for acquisition of easements were necessary to be able to protect critical water resources. Maintaining an inventory of, of lands to, again, this is one thing we ran into in trying to identify those conserve properties is to be able to, to work to maintain an active list of those, to be able to have the knowledge of where those are located as you make land use decisions. And that's, you know, staff actually provided us with a very, a, a much better list than I think you could get a lot of places. So they, they did, they're doing a good job on that, but something to continue to, to monitor because it does, it does impact land uses around them. And it, it talks about recommending consideration of low-impact development. We already talked about conservation subdivision, but low-impact development is essentially kind of going back and, and treating stormwater in a multifaceted approach. So a lot of times, your standard approach is I'm building a development, I put in my pervious space, we calculate how big of a hole I need to dig for the stormwater to run into and how long it takes that to exit the property. So that, so that deals with peak flows and things like that. What it doesn't address is water quality, which is something that came up a lot about, through the public input portion of this plan, is, is the concern about water quality in the creeks and rivers and estuaries and things like that. Low-impact development is a way for water to infiltrate more naturally as part of the design. So if I, I have a parking lot island, this is the one shown, instead of just surrounding it by curb, designing it such a way that water can flow into it and, and, and be able to go through more natural processes to, again, reduce the runoff amount, but also increase water quality. It is a little more engineering for somebody to, to think through as part of, of a development, but it, it is something that is, is, is readily implementable to, to be able to, to help out with that stormwater issue. As we talk about housing and some of the policies related to that. So again, as Melanie discussed, we did look at what we call these target locations where just to be able to understand where you have the, the potential for proximity to services, proximity to jobs, and where you may be able to leverage partnerships to be able to access some of those gap financing tools to create affordable housing. As you can see on this map, a lot of those that were assessed are on the mainland side. The, the areas on the Walkamond Lake are fairly limited as, as far as this assessment. So, and a lot of that is, again, creating the infrastructure necessary. When I'm talking about infrastructure, I'm not necessarily talking about just water sewer, but like relational infrastructure, having the relationships with that side of the development entity. It's not something that the county can go alone to address affordable housing, but just to be able to understand how the mechanism works and where you can benefit from some of those tools, and to be able to form some of those relationships to, to, to target that. It also talks about being able to locate, in general, housing near jobs, near just infrastructure. We want to recognize and preserve historic and cultural sites. We talked about that cultural overlay district earlier, but also to promote any national, national register programs that, that may be eligible to be sought after as well. And then to be able to assess natural resources as well as you're, as you're looking at housing. So Melanie, would you have anything you would add to that?
Areas, especially emphasis areas, because it really begins to set the pathway forward for more intentional planning from a small area planning perspective, which really places the power, the voice of the residents back into their hands from planning for their communities. When you look at these areas that have been called out, especially emphasis areas, they each have unique needs as it relates to affordability and unique challenges and ways to begin to address that. And so in the plan, there's multiple different recommendations for various different housing typologies and approaches to partnerships to be able to successfully begin to close that affordability gap that you have in those areas.
Question, Melanie. Have you seen scenarios where land is located and water and sewer infrastructure is in place that say a county or municipality would bring in a partner and create land trust? Have you seen land trusts develop where the owner of the subject property would give to the entity in the form of a land trust and take a tax write-off for that transaction?
Yes, and community land trust or land trust are growing. I will say even here in the upstate area in Greenville, we have a pretty robust strategy around the creation of that type of land trust.
That goes back to though, creating those relationships, understanding who those entities are that provide those sorts of resources and being able to collaborate with them in intentional ways. It's, it's, it's intentional work that, that has to be done. But, but it's, it's one of the things that you kind of get more used to doing that and working with those partners, you can, you can start to try to make a dent in that issue.
And I will say, in, in my research and being able to have focus groups and working with the various different organizations in Georgetown County, there is a true desire to really get creative around what those types of partnerships could look like to close those affordability gaps.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
There we go. All right. So my last, my last slide, as far as policy is concerned, it deals with economic development. And that's to, to, as a base of that, we've established you need to create a strategic and comprehensive approach, building those relationships, knowing locational needs and directing uses accordingly. Direct employment uses throughout the county. So that's one of those things is that if, if you want to be able to have housing and other things throughout the county, in the mainland, job centers are a big help to be able to, to coordinate those two activities. And this, this land use element tries to do that. Maintain a regulatory framework that supports entrepreneurship. So making sure that when you do revise a zoning ordinance or, or look at your current zoning ordinance that, hey, I can, I can start a business here, I can grow a business here and, and stay in the county and, and employ people here in the county. So again, the low barrier of entry all the way to the big employment center. And then to, to continue to promote the unique assets of the county. So kind of coming into a landing, going to kind of go to a top 10 of here of, of things that we're, that we get, that get covered as part of this land, draft land use element recommendation. So overall, it provides a framework that balances community character, natural resources and infrastructure. Those are the main factors that go into a lot of the land use decisions. But also, it promotes the idea of, of reviewing and revising your zoning ordinance to be able to do that, and then initiating targeted rezonings and do small area planning where it makes sense. That Merle's end of Marsh Walk was, was the one that, that, that Planning Commission specifically mentioned. But there are a number of locations throughout the county that that would be a, 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 a good activity as part of going through zoning revisions and things like that. Supporting the other elements of the comprehensive plan, again, those kind of set policy in a lot of directions. This land use element just needed to figure out a way to be able to translate that to land use. To provide an improved and tailored approach throughout the county. So we talked a lot about those, use of those conservation, agricultural, rural residential, rural village concepts that are more specific than your current land use design has right now. And that, again, touches about 77% of your land. The plan offers a reasonable balanced approach to housing based on current conditions. So we looked at current zoning, we looked at current development, we, we took all the, the aspirational statements and comments and tried to balance those in a way to come up with a, a sustainable housing approach and strategy that, that, again, improves your situation, but is probably not going to go to all the way to solving all the housing issues. But it is providing additional opportunities to do that in, in locations where they make sense. It advocates for substantial downzoning over 1,000 acres to general residential. And again, we talked about 435,000 acres in that conservation ag, rural residential, rural village concepts. It provides, it provides a land use framework that balances community character, natural resources and infrastructure. Sorry, I already went over this. Go back. It, it promotes a fairly aggressive open space target for the Walkamond Lake of 50%. Again, assessed as part of a previous study done for the 17 corridor. Advocates for tools to conserve ecological features and natural resources such as conservation subdivisions, stream and wetland buffers, conservation easements, promotes enhanced stormwater management. We talked about those, use of those stormwater protection areas, low-impact development. And it tries to project lands for future economic development, knowing that business parks and things like that. I drove through Andrews on the way here. There's buildings coming up all over the place and, and the business center out there. You, you need to think of that next step. And this, this plan tries to think about where, yeah, where that, some of that next step of where those types of uses can continue to, to be pursued in the, in the county and establish it a framework for future review. So again, following this framework, looking at where infrastructure is, what your natural constraints are, what historic development patterns are to be able to reinforce those existing development. I say all that to say is that I, we think this, this provides a, a well-rounded and balanced approach and, and frankly, a fairly aggressive approach in some cases to solving a lot of the issues and concerns and aspirations that came out of all the public comments that we received. We're balancing a lot of things. You're balancing density versus affordability. You're balancing natural resources versus usable open space and, and those sorts of things. And this, you know, it doesn't, we try to use, package all that in a logical way in, in this plan, at least to provide some of the tools to be able to do those things. I want to close on a next step slide. So one thing is to continue to study.
Brian, before you get to closing, I want to ask you, this is the last question I'll ask you. Bear with me. We, it's occurred to me as we've gotten into this in, in the last couple of years, that we have at least twice as many zoning ordinances as we need. And maybe that's not too conservative. It may be, it may be more than that. We may need to keep 30% of them. Mike, can you give me, how, what's your feeling on that?
I, I think our, and my colleagues can chime in, but as we've discussed internally, there probably are too many zone districts to implement the type of development that the county has traditionally had. I think it can be simplified and more straightforward in a way that still implements the, the desires of the county. There's, frankly, yeah, zone districts on the books that don't get used. A lot of times, it's easy to try to solve an issue and you create a zone district and then circumstances change and that sort of thing. But I think a holistic approach to looking at the zoning ordinance would result in probably fewer districts than you.
Well, I know, you know, you've changed the definition, you know, we don't, we're going away from low, high and medium to something else. And I just thought while we were at it, we ought to get rid of about 60, 70% of these ordinances. Thank you.
I'd kind of conclude with next steps. Talked about doing, to be able to continue to study the build-out implications. We know there's been a lot of talk about what this plan would do to number of residents, location of those residents, things like that, the questions that you sort of brought up, council member. So to be able, and, and so that, that work has started to kind of, to look at some of those types of questions is, is how that compares. That implementation is ultimately the key. So taking these things like updating a zoning ordinance and pursuing targeting rezoning, if you don't tailor your regulations and some of these other policy concepts, the plan won't get implemented in either, in any case. So use the plan. For affordable housing and housing overall, as far as a housing strategy, to be able to take kind of the reins and take a more active control in a more affirmative way with, in a new land use plan and comprehensive plan elements allow you that opportunity to kind of revisit all that like we have and, and come up with a, a, a way to approach housing. And then to reassess, again, we know things like CPST or the, the, say the sewer provider decides that, hey, I want to expand a certain area. I think that does open up those sorts of areas because that is such a significant factor here in the county about the carrying capacity of land, that that does kind of establish a priority to look into those specific locations to see if land uses need to be updated accordingly. Does that change the circumstances that we looked at right now and where, when we're adopting the plan? With that said, Mr. Chairman, that concludes the consultant's presentation.
One other statement. Could you, great report. Next thing is, as you mentioned, this is a balancing act. Would you say at this time, you see more residential development moving towards Georgetown at this time rather than economic development? Because it seems to me that both have to move together. To have jobs and maintain our young people here, we have to have industry and businesses coming in. No businesses coming in, the young people come, take a look, see, and they move on. So then you have developers who come here and they see the other hand of retirees coming in, and they're going to bill to the retirees. So it has to be a balanced promotion of Georgetown County to keep our young people. So in your dialogue with developers coming here, are you seeing more residential developers coming at this time, more than commercial industrial development?
So I think that's also a bit of a balancing act. I, I think that both are true. I think you have developers that are obviously going to, at the housing prices that you're seeing now, that they're going to try to find a way to make that work. There's the demand for it. On the other hand, as jobs become available, as like the, these businesses fill in, the industrial parks and business centers and things like that in the county, you know, you do typically see, you know, commercial following residential. Residential usually comes first and then commercial will come after that because it's kind of a known quantity. With job centers, that's a little bit different. If you have the jobs located there, especially in areas of the county where land may be more affordable to be able to provide that, then you probably will see more demand for residential near those job centers and the commercial will follow that.
Thank you.
A follow-up on that question. With the public input that you received, did you figure out what the demographic of that input was?
I don't have it in front of me. I think we do have it in sections of the report. It tended to skew, we did not ask that, let me go back. We did not ask that of participants of our open houses.
Okay.
So we don't have that. We do have the, the results from the survey that was done prior to our, starting our effort that, that the county proactively was, had started on the plan prior to the consultants coming online. So we do have that. I don't have it in front of me. It tended to skew older and primarily Walkamond Lake residents.
Homeowners.
Homeowners.
Retiring, older.
Well, one thing Holly can probably speak to, I mean, the, the types of engagement and the locations of engagement, including additional engagement that staff did was meant to balance
Yes.
that input.
We, we wanted to make sure and, and, and we will commend, commend staff is that we, as, as consultants attended some of the open houses across the county. We tried to, to scatter those in locations and times and, and different things like that. The staff went out of their way to try to, to hold additional opportunities and resources in different locations to be able to feed back information into the plan on top of that. They, they really put in a big effort to try to make sure everybody had an opportunity to, to, to have their, their, their say and their piece as part of this.
Are you all adding the definitions page that we talked about?
Holly mentioned that to me and we, yeah, we can add that to an appendix or, or somewhere or maybe at the top of the document to. or maybe at the top of the document to, you're talking about the acronyms and, or the abbreviations and common things like that. We'll, we can.
And will we have a PDF type where we can connect the dots on different areas? So if there's a term, there'll be a link to the definition at the bottom, it'll be electronic friendly when we proceed the document, or is it going to be just a regular boring old PDF? Can you put a live link inside the electronic document that would kick you to that definition?
To that page.
We'll look into that.
Oh, look into it. Yeah.
That would help when people are doing research.
Yeah, absolutely.
Add all back in. And then I had one final question on, and the reason for my question on the definitions was you mentioned open space, but what's the definition of open space? And then you had, like two slides ago, I think, 77% of land is under conservation agriculture? Is that?
It was a combination of conservation agriculture and that rural residential, so like the one, the more, the next phase, but yeah, 70, collectively between those two, 77%.
Okay, so it's basically one per acre, is that what you're saying, is 77%? Less than one per acre.
Yeah, let me.
So the rural residential would be one per acre, but then the conservation ag is really meant to be very, very low density.
Right.
But in our zoning, it's literally you could have one per acre if you wanted, correct?
Oh, yeah. That's where there's a disconnect between, again, on the very low density side, there's a disconnect between your zoning, like you have a lot of one, a couple of one per acre settling districts, but you don't have anything lower density. So we are also recommending that be adjusted to.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah, I have it broken out here, so that rural residential that's currently the one unit an acre or less is 26%. That conservation agriculture is 51% to kind of give you the breakdown of that. But again, like you mentioned, a lot of that is right now treated as the same, and two units an acre or less.
So what, for your definition, what is conservation agriculture?
So we're talking about primarily lands that are either under conservation easements or have considerable agricultural.
Farming.
Farming, active farming going on.
And how that stands now, that's, that's one unit per acre, Holly?
Yes.
For FA?
The closest we would have is FA, which is one unit per acre. We do have a preservation agriculture district, which is one for 25. It's very limited. It's basically on the existing conservation easements along the river in the western part of the county, and we have a five acre, that's basically historic plantersville. And they specifically, when we were zoning the western part of the county, we only placed those where people, you know, specifically asked for those districts, but as you know, the majority of everything else is FA at one to one.
Are you, Holly, going to do away with the FA forest and agriculture definition?
Don't know that yet. That would come about as part of this zoning ordinance rewrite and update. I think Ms. Mercado had also asked for maybe like we have now, a lineup of these place types with our current zoning districts, so I've worked on that document as well. It's kind of hard because they're not exactly going to fit, right, Jake? Because some of these, we don't, we don't really have a district that might fit one of these place types yet, so that's going to take some work and implementation piece that we've talked about.
The reason I ask that is we got to keep in mind that, you know, the state government has definitions, particularly when it comes to property taxes.
Yes, that's often quite confusing that that term is used there as well.
That's, let's don't confuse FA. Are you all right with that, Ms. Angela?
We're going to try to keep down the confusion.
Okay.
So on the 77%, is that a goal that?
Pardon, sorry.
I'm trying to understand the 77%, is that a goal?
That's, that's just looking at the way the current land, draft land use map, just that is the statistic using that draft land use map.
The zoning reality is way lower.
Correct, yes, the, yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that, those, and again, it's not necessarily a one for one because there's multiple districts kind of used to implement that, but the, what you'd probably use as a conservation agriculture is used pretty sparingly in its specific circumstances right now.
I just want to make sure one thing before we close out and follow up what Bob was bringing up. If we change these designations, if, you know, if we do, what, from FA to whatever we're recommending, that in no way will reflect on the tax base of that FA land as it stands today.
Right, the tax, the tax would be based on the use of the land.
It'll, that'll stay the same, no matter what we designate it, change the verbiage or whatever.
And that can definitely be a consideration when you get to dig into the actual zoning ordinance as well, is to make sure that you're not going to have those.
I don't, I don't want to spaz out 10,000 farmers and.
That's right.
Me neither.
You got that right, Raymond.
Okay. Well, thank you for your presentation. Really appreciate it. It's very informative and thanks for all the questions proposed from council. Any other matters we need to bring before council this evening, Madam Administrator?
Just a quick comment, since I have all of you here, we did the first reading on the two ordinances related to CPST and to laws. If there are any outstanding questions or issues that you have, I think Walt is still in the room. Yeah, and if you had anything for CPST or any follow-up, please let us know. We plan to have that on the agenda for the 25th, and we just want to prepare so that we're ready to answer any questions that you may have.
I have one question. Ms. Ackman, do, do we as a county, do we have a plan going forward for getting this information out to the public as we did in 2014, even though it's a lot of changes that have been made since 2014? Do we have a promotional plan and how are the councilors going to be involved with that? What are, what are our limitations on this?
So we are developing a plan for information sharing. We have, as a group, been putting together a list of groups, trying to get in front of them. I have already done a couple of speaking engagements, I have a few more scheduled up. We will be hitting this hard as we get closer to November. You know, we want it to be fresh in people's minds, so we don't want to start too far in advance. There have, as you said, have been quite a few changes since the last go-round. You know, I, I think the, the good part we have going for us is there are a lot of fantastic projects on the list, so we do have to monitor ourselves. We cannot advocate for either one of these taxes. We can only educate about these taxes. So that is, that is our limitation, but we are soliciting help from all different walks of life across the county to share this information with the public.
Thank you.
We will also be providing information count on the do's and don'ts as part of the process for council, certainly for staff. We have started our process internally, internally, and we will be sharing that publicly and all across the county because we really want county support. I think we have some great opportunities to change and better the course, of course, what's happening in Georgetown County. So we certainly solicit the public support.
And we're going to work very closely with Charles and Scott on getting this information out.
Yes, and we appreciate the help they've given us in covering the process up to this point, particularly CPST.
In addition to the media, in terms of financing to disperse this information across the county, what is the source of that?
The source is going to be from many places. In fact, we are working on the financial plan with our partner for this will be the Chamber of Commerce, and that information will be forthcoming to you on the 25th.
Okay, thank you. I think we have fulfilled the purpose of our agenda for this, especially me and Georgetown County Council. Being that there's no further business, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
It's moved by Councilor Carolina, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Elliott, any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose, motion carries. This meeting is not adjourned.